Well, thank you. At four o'clock, in San Juan, New York, at the LA, at one, at the South Side Circle, in San Juan, Mexico. Would you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see a simple, perfect friendship among United cultures. Hey, Ed, turn the mics on.
Roll call. Kevin and Tidham are new general manager, both drives. Jessica, director, Dave, through the chair. Edward, vice chief, and... Approval of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion. We have a second? You have a second? You have the all in favor? All right, all right. Motion carries. And just approve. Uh, manager for the fourth, we're going to have a report of it is Otis's first day on the job today. We want to welcome him. He's got an extreme experience in water infrastructure. Uh, he's had experience with, uh, Grant Line, man, they've been... He's got strong manager, he was evil, bad. And, uh, well, I don't know what it would have been about two so far.
I've been working less than years for AlloCurt. I'm really sorry. I was impressed. Got some, uh, what was it, I should take it out. Robert, that's who you kissed, got around. Over there, uh, one, uh, shop. Like, the bottom of the sun. Is that not all?
There you go.
That sound better?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
So, yeah, so, uh, the experience in a lot of areas. Never on the job, after about four years. He said all the problems that everybody's... Just think that, what I've been, uh, we're just... Great success. Honored and appreciate the great... After week. I'm excited to get started. I've already met all the guys, knew some of them, good, uh, great crews, great officers. You have to match for the better. Of course, that, very, uh... Like, like, they said one V S, if they said one V S. We gotta need to do, we got an Indian infrastructure, it's gotta be... Passion repair, it's gotta last. So, it depends on how much grant money you give. These things, uh, huge, you got engineer power systems that you're... System water. Yep, yep. So, everybody's got heat. It won't happen nowhere high. Then another, period, uh, very, uh, very, uh, exception of the water department here, Mark, uh, so... So, we'll... I have to put my own number out there. Service first name. If it's a billing or accounting, just call the office. So, if you got a bill, just show me, come on, call, call. And all these times, I've been, I've got service notes. Tell us about your, your back home. Back, back area. Back there. So, if you have, uh, water hours to report, whatever, just let me know. Call, call me, correct, I'll figure. That's the more pressing thing, you have to work this part out. You have to, uh, sort of, form it up. It is convenient, that problem starts. Then, a little bit better job, you know, we're gonna get seven people water out in the area. Some of them, they're in poor access, and then... To me, to explain some of this, uh, shut it off. You'd be involved, uh, ask us to water, just trust us, we'll get it. Sixteen hours, now, to water out. Well, as much as possible, get it to... To have that communication. Your experience on the areas. I'll be up here after we, if you guys have time. So, it's not a... Just... Or, sorry. I've got a whole new policy. And you're, like, not... Just come back to us. Give me a call if you're... I have a cell phone. Thank you, guys, for the last week.
Thank you for being here.
We were very fortunate to find, uh, Otis. He's been a resident for three years. Actually, he's been on the road working for a... An infrastructure company, laying fiber up in the Longwell area. And, uh, Chris, his son, guy, he should come back home. He has been there a long time. We appreciate the fact that you spoke with us on this. And I think that was a big plus for us. Love to find somebody with infrastructure, with experience he has, and to mess through. It's just been, it's gonna be fantastic for us. We appreciate everything, uh, from... Okay, moving on to project people. There. Okay, F and S account, uh, sixteen thousand forty-five dollars and two cents. Operations checking account, uh, thirty-nine thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and eighteen cents. USDA construction loan pass-through account, uh, under fifty dollars. USDA debt service account, uh, three thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. USDA short-term asset replacement account, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand seventy-five dollars and twenty-four cents. Water restricted reserve account, fifty thousand one hundred and two dollars and thirty-seven cents. And water standby account, five thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Thanks very much, guys. Moving on, your old business, approved minutes, October twenty-second. Chairman, make a motion, approve the minutes, and I'll go for a second. I mean, second, third, you have a second, all in favor? All right. Motion carries. I am number two, because he does, he gets, uh, lobby, Brody Lawton. And, uh, this is it, Ed Willnott.
Yeah, I got a request last week from the president of North Hallard. On the associate attorney, seven exes involved, and I was like, what's he got? He says, we're totally confident, so I called him, and he was actually, uh... Real forge on, uh, think it was, uh... Justin Morwitz. And, city industry, you know, we're a small utility. That we don't have that much income. Still have over, uh, expenses, but... Doesn't change the fact, he's still over in a lot of things. And it did do a lot of work. Uh, you know, on the app. But, work was done, we able to do that, and I, I promise them, thank you, hey. What they're worried about now is, they asked if I could, uh, come up with a, thank you... For it. Totally, but I was, it's a board meeting tonight, discuss it, and I'll call them back tomorrow, and let them know what we found out. I, I think we can do this. The original cost, I think, really is about three hundred thousand dollars. When, when the rest of the board found out about this, uh... What, a hundred and... Twenty, a hundred and twenty-six thousand, but, uh... During my conversation with them last week, uh, turns out there's another invoice something they know about. It's another fifty thousand dollars. So, I think that they... I, uh, our current balance to them is ninety-one thousand dollars. So, uh... I wanna get the board's approval, at least for the next couple of months, uh, maybe should really set me down some more. Fact is, we've got a lot of bills and whatnot. I was in the office, uh... Friday, all day long, trying to get all of our invoices caught up, okay? There's quite a bit of money going out, and we will have to have Thursday, and make sure there's still enough general account to pay for that. We're okay, but we're gonna need to lose more money out of, out of running other accounts going forward this month and the next month. That's what I'd like to report to Brody, is that we can pay them at least twenty thousand dollars this week, and then twenty thousand in December. January, that's where we're at. Other than that, uh, what I would ask the board... Is to... Like I said, I, I want to, I want to, promise them that I can pay them at least twenty thousand dollars this week. And to do that, we'd have to do twenty thousand out of special reserve, which, uh... That's what I can... Uh, it's, uh, restricted, restricted reserve. And... I was looking at that fund, I really don't want to touch that fund, get that fund, uh... We don't, we don't, hang with Brody, we're gonna have bigger problems. But, I was looking at this, that fund, it's over the years, uh... In 2017, uh, we had a board treasurer named Bowe, you haven't ever seen him, so, that's why. And he reported, uh, needing to pay, had twenty-one thousand in that fund. There was another time, uh, it dropped down to... When I saw it, they, they had it drop down to thirteen thousand, so, that fund has been used over the years, you know, for emergencies. Thank the board for reading this meeting, that what we're faced with, this debt is an emergency. We need to get it paid off, so we can move forward, and certainly, you know, the infrastructure and some other things that we're working on. Instead of paying off the check, it's legal bill. So, uh, and we did, as a board, we did swear that we were, that was gonna be primary, wanted to replenish that fund as soon as we're able. And I think we can do that. But, I mean, we can't vote on it tonight, but, but, like, we want to consider that, including, and that's twenty thousand, uh, made... Any lead from Brody, and another twenty thousand next time. Another fifty thousand, so, about twenty thousand dollars.
We're making financial progress, staying with a net, with a new, uh, rate adjustment that we had last, this year. Uh, but everything we made, the rate hike adjustment, has just gone paying for lawyers, plus some. And of course, it was our vow a few months ago, that we weren't gonna rate rates. It was the biggest board's plans to have another rate hike, uh, towards the latter part of this year, early part next year. We don't want to do that. We want to be all for that, we want to be good, uh... Good, uh, use good financial sense, use some money that's been paid from our water subscribers in a proper way, that's going to start gaining some ground. You can't gain ground until it gets the first. And we were hoping by the first part of this coming year, that we could get this paid off, and start making it, like, on a regular account, pay it back, so... Taking it, helping.
Also, for those who didn't want to hear, previously, we did, we did, uh, retain this special counsel, because we had to have one. Uh, we've, we've got to set up different, this time, he's a local attorney. We paid him a three thousand dollar, uh, anger, actually, we paid him another three thousand to handle another, another case, and he suggested, just combine the two accounts, so there were six thousand dollars in there. But, uh, he's, he's already done quite a little workforce, cleaning up some of the other stuff that Brody backed out of, and also, already filed papers and whatnot, District twelve, he's a fifth board member, twenty. But, when we were set up, financial with them, is currently, there's over six thousand dollars in that account. Uh, they suspended an invoice for sixteen hundred last month, for all the work that's done thus far. And that account gets down to about a thousand dollars, and we'll, we'll discuss, and then board meeting again, and then a couple thousand. We're gonna keep it at about three thousand, then one thousand. So, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have this problem ever again with invoices that are hidden, and suddenly, you know, surprised with them. Doing good workforce, they're local, and so, this... What faced with Brody is disgraceful, but it's not gonna happen, he'll make sure, fix that, it won't happen again.
And who counseled working in a fraction of a block, not the price, but... A fraction. Gonna do...
So, I wish we could vote on it tonight, but, but, what I told, uh, we didn't have a plan, get back on, when I call, for... Hold on, guy.
Okay, moving on, this is still approved sixteen standby leads, in the amount of four thousand five hundred nine cents, uh, nine dollars and sixty cents. Uh, the cost of file will be four hundred dollars. Need a motion. You popped the red. Okay. Okay. Uh, uh, we're to discuss an approved sixteen standby leads in the amount of three thousand five hundred nine dollars and sixty cents, the cost of filing, before. Then, now, this wrote before, these pay off, the long-term force, because it's probably still close to title, they have stayed us, we have a lead. So, we're getting our money back, but it's gonna be a slow, but I think overwhelming, we, we get more back than we pay about, except for that. But once they see that they've got a lead on their property, what's the percentage of paying? Twenty-five percent will come in and pay, pay off, you know, the leading this cost, which is better, better than nothing. So, uh, we need a motion for, uh, this chairman, make a motion to approve the sixteen standby leads in the amount of four thousand five hundred nine dollars and sixty cents. We have a motion, we have a second. We have a second, all in favor? All right. Motion carries. Proceed. Item number two, discuss, approve change in the link, C W A, new dues, for, uh, three employees, and what has happened is, some of the employees that work for us, the dues are supposed to be drafted out. They checked, it never got done. So, they're in a rears, uh, new, new, uh, dues, and Ed and myself believe that, uh, we should just take care of it, and bring them up to date. And, uh, and hopefully, we get it all aligned. Jessica is our new steward, and she keeps track of all that, and she's in the office, so hopefully, we don't have this... Uh, how much money we're talking about?
Hey, the, the link with fees up to date, for all three of our members, would be four hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty cents.
No brainer. Okay, uh, need a motion.
Uh, chairman, I, uh, make a motion, we approve names in the link, C W A, new, for the three employees.
Then a motion, we have a second. All in favor? All right. Motion carries. Take this. Uh, item number three, discuss approved, uh... Reenacting water systems advisory committee, submitted for, uh, board approval by Art and Shu, list of act, in items, act. I'm not, just kinda talking, get off guard. Let's see if that's...
No, I think it was, it was something to reach, uh, you know, uh...
Okay, subject, reenactment, water system advisory committee. You know, class. Update, maps, documentation, investigation, USDA grant needed, uh, as designed, you know? Expand and redesign as needed from two above, advise will change as need. System upgraded to G I S. We have a little discussion on this, I'm, I, we have a new general manager, and he should be the one making the calls on, on these items. I think it's well within his scope, you, uh, to do any investigation due diligence on each of these items. And, uh, help us make a decision, because right now, I would say, firstly, that we don't need to do this right now, I think that too many irons in the fire. We've got too many distractions that we need to focus on, what we've got going, and trying to do a better job, what we're doing, and immediate, uh, with water renewal, water infrastructure, replacement. And we need to move forward in so many areas, I kinda think this might be a distraction, uh, from what we're trying to accomplish. That's my first one. Do you want it? Anybody else?
Well, I approve the, uh, water advisory. Uh, of course, the general manager will complicate it, it's gonna be, it's possible. And, uh, being various types of people, a lot of them, a lot of them, they can bring the light, maybe things that weren't known, known by others, uh, they make the presentation, the reports, advisory. Your suggestions, uh, we'll get to know more, and, uh, and so, whatever, the general manager, so, besides having to schedule time to sit with them, uh, every week, or every month, or something, that's good, outside, that's it.
All right. I don't have a... Always place that, yeah. So, some, some, uh... Our labs, documentation, or the general information. You don't have, I have, you have, correct map, you have. And we think the general manager, we don't have a map, what he's responding to. We don't have the, uh, USDA, right? That we have... Tank six, where we were supposed to be... Located, just water coming from tank six. Right now, it's got a combination, tank two, and tank six. It was done because we first started, uh, tank six system, it's, it's, couldn't get water. And two, we turned on, give me the water, gave you, you're sent, they're not there for years now. There's never been mistakes, there's never been properly documented. And that system over there on tank six, these are the, uh... These things done, too.
We've gotta document this, we've gotta map it, and how much money did this document?
It cost you?
Okay, nobody's wrong.
Well, Jerry, the only thing, take this, see, this is part of the match, but you're gonna need that. Which is for you, for you guys to do all the work. Yes.
Okay, let's have a motion. I hope we, uh, approve, we act. Under... Yeah, under our should, as in, I...
All right.
All in favor? All right. Motion carries, Art, give the map. Item number four, discuss approved, over, rental, art, which is just, Dan, and San Juan, like, pretty, you know, probably, San Juan, uh, development council, uh, submitted by Jessica Roberts on behalf of the T B C. For anybody here, for the T B C, that's moved, gives, learn.
I... Normally, they are.
I, I, I don't know, I can talk about it. I, I understand, looking, and wanting to use the label for, um, also, all of them, we've had a good working relationship, you see. Uh, they have a lot of, uh, equipment, lots, things like that, like, uh, fun housing, for Halloween, all of that stuff is stored away, making it...
Oh, for, for all of the holiday events, we're gonna be putting on for the community, we don't have any more storage area for the stuff. It, some, we've lost a lot of it, actually, this year, due to water damage from where it was stored.
That's what we might do.
That room right there. Yep. Yeah, it's, it's not really used for anything.
The big space.
Yeah, we, yeah, we need it for when we're prepping for our holiday functions, and storage for our supplies.
So, the supply of these store in there, are they gonna be chilled and organized?
Yeah, they'll...
There's not gonna be stuff all, all of the group?
No, it would be organized storage, and then a place for us to set up when we're building things for an event.
Well, this is more of a community, a workshop.
Like a workshop area, too. Yeah.
For a special event here?
Yes. And they do education classes once or twice a month, they're free.
And you're going to do that in that room?
We could hold that in there also.
Okay, we're gonna educate what?
Could be anything from canning, quilting, autos, yeah.
So, you're gonna give many, many seminars?
Yeah, we do at least once a month, I know that, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make this. Motion to approve this proposal to rent a large rate, chasing the annex from San Juan Lodge, and from San Juan Development Council for a dollar a year.
We have a motion, we have a second? All right. We have a second, all in favor?
All right.
We have a motion, carries, that's, uh... Okay, one question, any, any more questions, comments, running, going, whatever? Everybody's good.
For the general manager, uh, I don't have a problem with whatever we can do, and, you know, water outages, all that, but, when we call in a problem, I'd like to have some feedback, because I asked for my meter to be checked, and, uh, I never, never heard if they did it or not. So, if you, any way you wanna do it, you know, phone call, email, whatever, it would be nice just to hear that.
No, that's exactly what I intend to do, that's, it's really communication between, uh, our people there. That's, uh, but, my, my cell phone will be available, call me direct, I'll be, uh, answer your questions, and, uh, I don't want to, it's getting nice to have somebody asking, sorry, at least get this as possible, and, good to see, I'm gonna turn off, help me, uh... So, yeah, that's, uh, follow up on. I can, if I drop the ball, I'll try to take that, that.
Well, I don't wanna bother you after hours or something, because that's not an emergency, you know, I would just like to hear back.
Yeah, that's what I'm here for.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have an email, I have a system, I send emails, that's called, prepare me, prepare me to, uh...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is also for the general manager, I don't know how much you know about the past year, but, uh, T D C... My question is also for the general manager, I don't know how much you know about the past year, but, uh, T D C, the Tim Ron Development Council took over management of the pool, but they were also working in conjunction with the general manager to ensure it was in operation, you know, correctly and all that. Um, will you continue to work with us and the lead lifeguard and the person that does the chemicals in order to? Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure before we, you know, have to look for somebody else. Kurt? No, Kurt, Kurt does not want to. I'm trying to find one.
Before it gets, uh, from time to time, we need to get a budget sent on approved, uh, for this one. Get our name done at a time to. Yes, sir.
First of all, have the work. Very important.
No.
Chair, the budget committee, or?
Yes.
Scott, I thank you, like, Rick McCullough and Jessica for the budget finance committee. All I can be, you haven't been able to find like the figures for work, but because of your, uh, security. Obviously, obviously, uh, we put my phone on. Yeah, probably, yeah, I'm all over.
Yeah, that's not fair.
And, uh, you can study not helping or?
What?
You can change whatever, okay, yes, what can I give you there?
Well, I, I wouldn't, but, I'll, I'll, we have a perfectly good way to budget that was thrown away by previous boards. Trying to be, well, they did, they got a big work, they did, get it into the program to replace the, uh, the one that Bruce stuff all together. Yeah, no, what, this is what they base, so, uh, we've had that work here, I'm not sure. Okay, we, we, as everyone knows, we have an I T in here and have them for a long time, get all our new computer stuff, uh, in. Uh, the old computer stuff's gonna be, so Jesse's got it, uh, so we can use it in accounting process, budget process. Uh, our I T work has been going slow, there's, uh, done and it's very, it's, it's proving to be very fruitful for the office. Uh, so Jesse's kind of in an old pattern until we get most of our I T, but he has a, we need to. No other questions? Uh, we've had some, we've had some back and forths on the use of the lodge for extractivity and entertainment. What's been said back and forth, uh, I don't know if it's wrong or red or blue, uh, based on. Uh, this, to use this facility is, it's not a right, it's a privilege. And in stipulation, you have a real agreement yourself with that. And Don, I think you're the one who signed this for the people, is that correct?
Yes.
So you can read this thing thoroughly?
So you'll have to speak up.
Did you read this contract, rental contract thoroughly when you signed it?
Um, there was not a rental contract, the, uh, sparking banking, uh, said that we need no fees, we do the cleaning.
Okay, we, we need to have a little, read this guy's inputs, so we need, need to, this is what the office.
It should be in your files, the agreement that we have.
Okay, well, let's, let's supersede that since that's out, but anyway, the main content of this is, and it's spelled out on item one, areas for insurance windows must be left in the same condition and location as they were upon renting. Any material was used must be replaced at various expense, trash, empty, bags replaced, bathroom cleaned and restocked. Floor is clean, the back is empty, then floor mop, light fans, heater, it goes on to say, uh, all these stipulations that need met. And over here on page one, it says that the renter's responsibility is to provide a copy of general liability, that's liability. Uh, so this is part of our little agreement. And, uh, you know, yes, I think there's some flexibility down there. But by the same token, it, it's not hard to return this room back to the way it was. That's all we're asking, that's all we're asking.
It's a lot, it's gonna work, do we have to put like a hundred chairs back every time?
No, but if you, if you assemble it back like this, we don't need all the chairs, Al. Just a company. But that's just, that's just for.
It's how you wanna break camp.
This is fine, you know, if we had a big crowd, it would be, physically, people weren't geared back. We have a big crowd, but most of the time our crowds are kinda like this, you know, we're pretty, pretty, big slide, very easy. By the same token, it's a lot of work on the other side too, for our employees that have to come in here on hourly wage. So, you know, we only have Jessica now. And so for her to be able to just bring technology, we're working, we believe in this. All right, so we're just saying please.
Jessica, we can work together, can't we?
Yeah, we just, after it's used, if it gets cleaned, it always has been, we just need it to keep that way.
Can I, can I? Jessica, when I asked you after that wedding party thing?
Mm-hmm.
And we cleaned up with them, because bingo, community bingo, that place, you said you had no problem, that we were keeping the room clean. Are you saying now that that's not what you said?
The only, no, that was then, but since then, like, the chairs and the table, we came in to use the, for a meeting the other day and all the tables were still out and everything. It hadn't been cleaned since the yet, last use, so we just wanna make sure that everyone's still cleaning, no matter who uses it. That's all.
Twenty or thirty. We're willing to have work.
We're there, we're okay.
Well, I know that you're doing the work, but I'm saying.
No, it's about five of us.
Okay, well, there's five of you doing the work, versus our employees who are on the clock. Okay, Chris, that's all we need. Take the stories.
It's, it's, it's not my complaint, I just wanna make sure that whoever uses it cleans it, it's in, it's in the agreement.
It's a charge for the rental agreement, it's a dollar a year. It's actually to clean up, leave it, add you found it, we don't charge. But if, uh, first, if somebody comes in from the outside, one of you want to, want to use it. And if they wanna use the outside pavilion, it's a challenge for the dude, another hundred. And if they wanna use the pavilion with the inside restroom, one fifty. Yeah, there's a list, yeah, it was like, they're not, right, right, we're not starting on the, that's why there's no restroom. You know, then they, the law is here to be enjoyed and used by. We wanna make sure things that way.
No, it's a lot. We're all, see, we're like.
Well, yeah, the title of the building, all the T O D, that's we're responsible for the security and, uh, the maintenance and everything else that goes on, uh, building, so. And of course, the eating, those time here, we're looking at three or five thousand dollars for people. So we're holding this here, we're using, okay, 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 not saying the fifty, so marvelous deal. Yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay, so let's keep it on a deep friendly basis.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think I got our, 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 uh. Uh, simple comment was, my comment was, we glad that you have it, glad that you're using, glad that you.
It's a great, yeah, it's a great. Yeah.
This, right here.
That's okay.
Okay, so, so the comments that you made, uh, something to my son texting, would you were going to shut us down?
No, that is not the truth, that I can read you the exact, uh, the exact message I sent him. Good morning, Don, this is Dave, Jeff, yes, Pete, we had this conversation before, we've had a board meeting yesterday, and down a log auditorium was not put back as it should have been. We have another board meeting coming up this Tuesday, if your crew loses furniture, it is your responsibility to place a, found it. Uh, use of the lodge is a nice thing for the team, however it must be respected, we control access as needed. Thank you, Dave, that was the message, anything other than that is a blatant lie. Well, we do, we do control access. But we're responsible for, for people, access to people. And we've never, never had a issue, of course, this is simple.
Hey, well, we're gonna have some kind of extraction of the. Jessica, we gotta, have to worry about everything.
We're, we're all adults here. We're all adults here. Nobody's a bad man, nobody needs to be, everybody's their own person. We appreciate your.
Oh, okay, when the squirrel got in and tore everything up, bingo, it was clean.
We appreciate that.
I mean, we tried.
We appreciate that.
We'll talk to our members this, this next, like, round, about everybody, take your, your.
And for the office copies, can somebody just come inside the first copy? Okay. And just, just read it, initial it, sign it, and that's all, that way we have a first copy.
Is there anybody here connected with D T I?
With what?
D T I.
D T I.
Discussing Tim Ron corporate bar.
I don't see Tony.
I have a kind of question. No, 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 um. Yes, if you could, uh, drop a word to somebody, on that board or whatever, we're still waiting to, to hear when they wanna start to go shit. And we haven't heard anything, and, you know, we're, we're willing to, we're, we're interested, you did agree the last time, it was going very well, I thought. Just other things, heck, what?
No, I, I just can't believe.
Well, yeah, I can't believe it either, uh, we're, we're willing.
I'm just a bartender.
Our doors are open. We're here.
Well. We do more than that.
Uh, I'm not really.
You know, you know, we're there, so. I'm alone here, we're.
I don't wanna get shocked, but don't, so don't shoot the mess, everything, right?
I don't think so. No, seriously.
Yeah, wasn't that?
We were still, still, since it's been out, I'm still, and, and Tony said, last night, uh, Tony was here, he said, well, I've gotta talk to my board members, and I understand that, so, but, gotta talk to them.
Now, the board is making the effort, we do not want this bar thing turning to an eleven hour situation. So we're trying to avoid that for everybody's benefit, so we need to move this along, uh, by the time, uh, we gave them an extension on this week. Not a hard extension, uh, it's not a written extension, so we just need to solve, the bar needs to be a standalone entity, that's, that's all we. Is there any other remarks, questions, notifications? Sure.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion when you turn it.
All over the favor, we have a motion, set all over the favor, fine. Mr. Chairman, thanks to everyone for coming, hope it was a warm evening, it's the end of this stuff here.
I add one comment, I hope you, that his bingo is still going to be allowed. Shelves in that back room.
Sure, I don't see reading any, why not?